Have we introduced the new JCC to the board? Should we? Do we usually?
We did, yeah, because when we did.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Good afternoon and welcome and thank you for coming early and helping us through the budgeting process. I would call the meeting of the June 16th, 2016 of the Board of Trustees at Tarrant County College to order. Are there any public comments, Mr. Gates? All right, we will go right into the budget workshop. Ms. Robinson?
Madam President, Board Members, if you will recall, Mr. Greenhill, if you will recall, at the April 21st Board Budget Workshop, I outlined the Board Budget Workshops in the non-legislative year. We're in the second Board Budget Workshop, which means we're in the Planning and Assessing Budget Workshop. At this point, the KELT has prepared their requests for presentation and prioritization to the Board. Dr. McLendon and I are bringing preliminary requests to you so that we can get your input, feedback, and expectations. After we get back tonight, the KELT will meet to discuss and integrate your ideas and opinions into narrowing those requests that we bring to you tonight. The next budget workshop will be August 4th. The workshop will be a budget proposal for your review. The final workshop will be August 18th where we'll have a proposal for adoption. Tonight, we're going to bring you an update on the financial outlook. Dr. McLendon will present the KELT requests. I've also asked Dr. Joy Gates-Black to present the faculty request for dual credit as a separate item from the other KELT requests. Our dual credit programs have exploded. TCC serves 21 ISDs. For Fall 2016, we currently have a request for 451 sections. We need full-time faculty. Then I'm going to give you a brief history of renewal and replacement, commonly known as Fund 40, and the status of this year's Fund 40 budget. Finally, I've asked Dr. McLendon to update you on the status of our leases and to give you recommendations about those leases going forward. Let me pause here for a minute to thank certain people. First, Dr. McLendon and his staff, Ms. Chang and Shelley Birch. In preparation for the presentation on the leases, Dr. McLendon actually went, not only went to all the lease spaces, talked to the employees, knows what's taught there, knows the expiration of the leases, walked the space, so he's very, very well-prepared for tonight. Dr. Gates-Black, while she's only presenting on dual credit, she worked tirelessly with the presidents in long hours working on this. What you'll see tonight is a result of the funneling down or the narrowing of all of the requests that originally came in several weeks ago. Ms. Nina Petty and her facilities team gave me lots of information for the renewal and replacement slides that you'll see up here tonight, so I thank the KELT for all of their long hours in these presentations. At the end, we'll want to get the feedback for your August 4th budget workshop. Going to the financial outlook, Shelley. First, on the state appropriations. State appropriations is going to stay the same as last year, 56.3 mil. On the tax valuation, if you recall, in April, I told you that we would have the uncertified preliminary estimate. I also told you, because finance told me to tell you, that we would not anticipate significant property increase. That's because they're so conservative, but in reviewing the streaming video, Mr. Carter said, "Oh, I think there'll be a 10% increase," and he was absolutely right. That is what we're looking at now. And what does 10% increase mean in numbers for us? We're looking at 10% increase means about 17 to 22 mil. July 25th, we will have the certified number, so I can give you a better number. Tuition, our total projection for tuition is 59.4 mil. What that means as far as an increase, if you recall, you all had an increase at the August 24, 2015 Board Meeting. You increased the tuition, as you can see up there, $55 to $59 for in-district, $86 to $106 out-of-district, out-of-state, $205 to $255, and non-resident, $205 to $255. What that means in dollars, and we're just projecting, is since that was only, because of the timing, we only had an increase for spring. This upcoming fiscal year, we'll have it for an entire year, so we're anticipating a net increase of 1.4 mil. Now, I'm going to ask Dr. McLendon to present the KELT requests with the exception of dual-credit faculty. Before he comes up here, I'd like to point out to the Board that these KELT requests do not include campus faculty requests, as these are still being vetted. We would ask, however, that in giving your feedback, you include your thoughts about additional faculty. We have programs such as aviation, nursing, culinary arts, hospitality management, engineering, surgical technology, radiologic technology, and physical therapy that are mushrooming and that we have waiting lists for. If we're going to grow those programs, not only do we have to have faculty to actually teach those programs, we have to have faculty to teach the core that progress into those programs. So, and again, Dr. McLendon's presentation will not include dual-credit faculty requests.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good evening, Mrs. Appleman, trustees. The Chancellor's KELT with great honor brings this budget. It's an effort of many people, but I have the privilege of just showing you these numbers. So, let's look at it from a big-picture perspective. I want to highlight again the Chancellor's comment that it does not include the cost for faculty, and it does not include the cost for dual-credit faculty. So, those numbers are not in here. So, with the exception of that, if we look at that, we're bringing forward an operating budget total, we're requesting of $1.3 million. We're asking a staff total of $1.5 million, total FTEs 32, so this gives you a grand total of $2.7 million. Now, in the next slides, we're going to go little by little. I'm sorry? I just summarized. It's 1.2 male is 1,236,587, sorry, and the staff is 1,455,292, so with a total of 32 FTEs, and the total amount of 2,691,879. Okay, I'll go a little slower. I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry. I will go slower. Okay. Okay, let's go to the next slide. I will go slower. Okay. All right, here is the KELT operating request. This is our request from our operating budget. So, the Northwest is asking for 150,350, and it's Northeast, sorry. It covers daily supplies, student activities for science, counseling, and children's center. The Northwest is requesting 398,701. It's for enrollment growth in aviation, fire technology, CIE programs, service agreements, new operating budgets for Marine Creek Nature Discovery Center in mathematics and the Science Division. The Southeast Campus is requesting 36,890 for culinary arts and dietetics. Trinity River Campus is requesting 56,500. New operating budgets for the sonography and computer tomography and nuclear medicine, enrollment growth from sign language and interpreting, and Veterans Resource Center support system for student veterans. Okay, the preliminary budget for requests for the Vice Chancellors. The Vice Chancellor for Finance is asking for daily operations for business services, which will support our weekend services that are continuously growing, and the Vice Chancellor for Real Estate and Facilities is requesting 566,646 for daily operations for building maintenance, central plant, custodial ground maintenance, and access control. Okay, now we will go for the staff request for the 2616 preliminary budget. Campus presidents are requesting a total of 18 positions. The South Campus is requesting one position with a cost of $4,315, which is a restructure of a two-part-time position to have a full-time nursing position. The Northeast Campus is requesting a fourth dean at a cost of $100,000. The Northwest Campus is requesting four positions with a cost of $172,930 for coordinator of flight operations and assistance in aviation, coordinator of special projects in aviation, community and industry education as an advisor, and administrative office assistant. Southeast Campus is requesting two positions, the cost of $101,906 is for one coordinator of dual-credit, and one coordinator of special projects in CIE. Trinity River Campus is requesting five positions with a cost of $203,208 for coordinator of academic support specialists, an administrative office assistant, a clinician coordinator, a CT nuclear medical, clinical coordinator for tomography, and a program director for tomography. The Connect Campus, the distance education campus, is requesting $303,916 for five positions with an assistant to the president, one assistant dean, and three academic advisors.
What dean, Northeast wants a dean?
It was a fourth dean.
Dean of what?
Which dean is that?
It's an academic dean position.
Okay.
Our academic area. Our campus has only three as compared to the four on the other ones.
Okay, and this is preliminary KELT request for the Vice Chancellors, requesting a total of 14 positions. The VC of Academic Affairs and Student Success is requesting two positions at $85,921. It's a manager center for the center at Arlington Independent School District, and a senior office assistant for dual-credit. The VC of Administration and General Counsel is requesting eight positions with a total cost of $246,551. One position is for HR Information Systems and Analyst of Title IX, and seven police video surveillance technicians. All right, the VC of Communication and External Affairs is requesting three positions with a total of $166,953. One digital archive asset coordinator for marketing, a senior grants developer, and internal communication manager. The VC of Real Estate and Facilities is requesting $46,792 for one project specialist.
Before I ask Dr. Gates-Black to the podium to present on the faculty request for dual-credit, I would like to point out to the Board that we do get revenue from the ISDs for the dual-credit. For the year 2014-2015, we got 1.5 million from the ISDs. For 2015-2016, we got 1.4 million.
Thank you, Chancellor. As was mentioned earlier, we have seen a significant increase in requests for dual-credit from our school district partners. This slide shows the school districts that Tarrant County College is currently working with, and the specific campuses that are serving those school districts. It's important to note that from 2012 to 2015, Tarrant County College experienced a 26% increase in dual-credit enrollments. That is not an increase in the number of students taking dual-credit courses, but rather an increase in the number of courses that these students are taking. From 2014-15 to 2015-16, we received a 33% increase in the number of course sections requested. Working with adjunct faculty and a small number of full-time temporary faculty, TCC Connect was only able to support a 20% increase in the number of sections requested. For Fall 2016, we have received a 23% increase over last year in the number of course sections requested. With our current resources, we estimate that we will only be able to support a 5% increase in the number of courses requested. This slide shows the dual-credit courses and the sections requested for Fall 2016. The green column shows the number of sections requested, which totals 451. The blue column shows the overall number of faculty needed to support the sections. This total is 75. And the yellow column shows the number of faculty that we are requesting. I've worked closely with the campus presidents, and we believe that with the number of full-time faculty who are willing to teach all or part of their load in dual-credit, and with the addition of some adjunct faculty, we could meet the school district's requests, excuse me, requests with only the 21 additional full-time temporary faculty.
Ma'am Chancellor, I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Morrison?
The concern is with full-time temporary faculty.
Yes.
Could you explain the logic behind that? I know there's a reason. I think I know the answer, but I want to hear it.
Yes. There, when it was under TCC Connect, Ms. Johnson Hadley had allocated 10 temporary full-time faculty because dual-credit is in a posture of what are we doing right and what are we doing wrong, and we want to be sure that we have a good model. And as you could see from the change that's already occurred, what we had before wasn't the best model, and so I'm not sure that the next chancellor coming in will think what is in place now is the best model, and that is why we want, we need full-time faculty, but we're not sure that we want permanent faculty. That model may change.
So, when you say temporary, will they be contracted for one year?
Yes.
During that year, will they have all of the benefits that other faculty?
They will.
And they have the option for renewal, but not a multi, what's the difference? Explain to us the difference. Where's HR?
Dr. Coronado?
Between.
Well, they will understand when they come in at the beginning of the year that they will not, they will not be renewed at the end of the year. Under, the typical faculty, when they come in, if they're not non-renewed before April 1, they understand they have a contract for the upcoming year. On a temporary faculty, that is not the assumption.
And I understand that. That was my thinking. So, let me get to my concern.
Yes.
Is that, and there probably is a, there probably are a lot of excess teachers out there. However, I'm not certain of that, and my concern is whether or not, under those circumstances, we'll be getting the best qualified people. I understand why you're doing this temporary, but I still have to express that concern. So, I would like to hear some comments about that.
Most of them be renewed anyway?
Yes.
Really, I mean, it's a year-by-year contract. Most of it's going to be renewed anyway.
Yes, the 10 that were temporary full-time are being renewed.
Yeah.
Or most of them are being renewed, yes. Not all of them.
So, but here's what I'm saying. You're not going to get someone to leave another job to come work for us if they know it's a one-year stint. However, if they may want to just get their foot in the door, a lot of people do want to come work for TCC because we're such a wonderful place to come and teach and learn. However, I just had to express that concern. I, you know, I understand everything you've told me, but I still have to express that concern.
And that is exactly what we want to hear back from the Board, yes. We want, take that under consideration.
I noticed you say ISDs, but I'm noticing a lot of charter schools over there. Harmony, it's got two or three.
Yes.
How much is this expanding? How much, I mean, how many charter schools are we going to be, how does that work? How do you decide which schools?
At this point, it has not been philosophically the opinion of the college that we were going to limit any of the schools that came to us to request to dual-credit. We've been able to reach, work with them to provide that, but it's very limited. It's about five, and that has not grown.
Okay.
That is not, not grown.
Because there's a lot of politics about expanding charter schools.
Yeah.
And that would increase our burden without, you know, another mandate without money to go with it.
Right, and for the record, Mr. Greenhill, they have requested very small amounts of dual-credit, because in most cases they're small.
Like there's a science academy and so forth, and a, you know, leadership academy, okay.
I will respond to what Chancellor Robinson was asked in terms of the temporary full-time faculty. It is, it takes a lot more time to hire full-time faculty. Our hope would be that by hiring these 21 full-time temporary faculty, we would be able to move forward into the permanent hiring process next year, and perhaps convert those folks if they rise to the top in the search process. So, that would be our hope. We could move forward to prepare for Fall because time is quickly getting ahead of us to be able to have faculty in place for the Fall Semester. So, that is one reason we come forward with the full-time temporary, because we can work to get that happening quicker with the goal of identifying those faculty, hopefully for permanent positions.
Thank you.
Is there any possibility of using adjunct?
We are using a number of adjuncts, but it is a finite pool of adjuncts that we have. We are using adjuncts to support our face-to-face instruction, our online instruction, our weekend college instruction, and our universities are using them as well. So, there's a finite amount of adjuncts that we have out there that we can use. Also, with dual-credit, going into the high school, a faculty member has to have an enhanced background check. background check. So, if we get an adjunct and that individual goes through an enhanced background check, and then he or she gets another job and leaves, we don't have someone ready that can step in because they haven't gone through that extensive background check.
I have one other question. So, do they have to meet the certifications for teaching at a high school and a college or only?
They absolutely do. Well, no, they have to meet it for college. They have, these faculty will have to meet the same credentialing requirements as our regular faculty and our adjunct faculty. These faculty will also be evaluated and observed, just like a regular faculty.
So, will you have a special recruiting effort for those?
We have had special recruiting fairs. Our Human Resources Office has done a great job identifying faculty who want to teach for Tarrant County College in an adjunct capacity. But again, finding them in the day to go into the high schools at the time when we need to provide this is not always easy.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At the last workshop, a question was asked, do we need to increase our renewal and replacement budget? So, I thought in order to answer that question, I should show the Board a history of our renewal and replacement budget. For the year 2010-2011, we had a budget of sixty-four million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, fourteen dollars. The expenditure was twenty-one million, one hundred and seventy-one, one hundred and eighty-two dollars, with a balance left over of over forty-three million dollars. What happens to that forty-three million dollars is it goes to the next fiscal year, which in this case is 2011-2012. So, that goes into the budget. It's added, new money's added, which in this case, that year was about thirty-five million dollars. So, you have a total budget for the year 2011-2012 of about seventy-nine million dollars. About thirty-seven million dollars is spent, leaving a balance of about forty-two million dollars. That money is rolled over to the next year for year 2012-2013. You have about seventy-eight million dollars that year. That year, about sixty-two-five is spent. You have fifteen million, seven oh six, five thirty-seven left over. That's rolled over, et cetera, et cetera. So, come on over to this year, Shelley. This is what has been spent. This is the itemization that I've got as of April 2016 of what's gone on campus by campus. I think Mr. Greenhill had asked, let's look at all the campuses together, and I'm sure the Board will recollect most of these approvals, especially the fire alarm upgrades and the heating and air. These are the ones I remember. Blue code phones that were approved. So, these are some of the approvals that have gone on this year. Next slide, Shelley. To give you more current numbers, the budget for this year for renewal and replacement, which is commonly called our Fund Forty. Our budget is a little over forty million dollars. We've had actual expenditures of seven mil, four thirty-two. We've encumbered about fourteen mil, and that's our balance as of June 16th, 2016. And now, I would ask Mr. McLendon to come up and discuss our leases.
Okay, next line. So, these are the present leases that we have, and I'll go through all of them. And so, the first lease is, we have a corporate service lease in the Alliance area, and it's, is going to expire on nine thirty-one, 2016. It services about fifteen thousand square feet. Its total cost on a yearly basis is four hundred and twelve thousand, seventy-three, and it provides corporate training for companies in the Alliance and Technology and Logistics Hub of, of, of the north area. The next one is a CLC, the Community Learning Center. It's in Grants Lane, and it, it will expire in 2016. The square footage is eight hundred and forty-two. The, the total cost is twenty-one thousand, and it services the community, and it provides space for ELS and GD classes. I just wanted to make a personal comment. This is probably one of the most enriching trips, even though when the Chancellor asked me to go look at this, I thought this is going to be a lot of mileage, but you know, I'm, I'm here for any requests you have. I met one of the faculty that's one of the most given people, working with the community, and that's really linking with people who have necessities. He spent like thirty minutes explaining how he was reaching to people, and I, I continue to say that I am humbled to work. A real asset will always be our faculty. And I had a chance in some of these places, in some of the service things that this district provides, it's unbelievable. We even met some of the people coming in, and the humanity and the service that you're providing, it's, to me, it's so impressive, and, and I wish that other people have had the opportunity to come with me. The, the next one is the Genesis United Methodist Church, and it expires in August thirty-one of 2016. Its square footage is nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty. The lease cost is three thousand dollars, and its, its space is used for continuing education, and it uses the chapel, and it uses other rooms. I thought it was such a warm and inviting place to bring people in and to show them different things. I, I was very much impressed. The fourth lease is James Gwin School, Small Business Development Center, and the game Gwin is, it's located in Rosedale and South, South Freeway, and it's, it's a small business development center. And it's an incubator, and it really helps. In fact, this is where some of our TIFs, I have one TIF in that building, and I'm very happy to be there. You have the Northbrook Records Management in Continuing Education, and that lease will expire in six thirty of 2018. There's twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty square feet. The lease is a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. There's two concepts in this lease. First, you have your archive and record management on one side of the lease, and on the other side of the lease, they have continuing education for floral, upholstery, jewelry making, cake decorating, and they are further expanding. Again, the community really, really takes advantage of this, and I, I thought I was really impressed. I'm not good at floral or the expanding, but there's a lot of people who really thought that this would be a, a really great skill set for people to have and, and to work. On the Tarrant County Workforce Continuing Education lease, it expires on three thirty-one, twenty-four. It has five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven square feet. It is a lease cost of seventy-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven. And it's, it's a partnership, and, and this is really a great partnership. It's between UTA, TCC, and the Texas Workforce Commission to give ESL, GD. It's located in a wonderful building, and when we, when we had to happen, there were, everybody was in class, and you had three, three centers working together, and I thought it was a, an impressive partnership for us to do on, on that side. And the last one we have is Water, go back, please, I'm sorry. No, no, not to worry, not to worry. It's Water Gardens Place, and that's right across from the MOC. That lease expires in 2018. It's used for the foundation, and the, the cost is eighty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars per year.
A question? Okay, so, let's talk about Water Gardens first. Is, so, is the foundation moving anytime soon, and what are we going to do with that space? Sublease it?
I have no information that the, the foundation is moving. I'm sorry, let's go to the next slide. I can.
No, I, I've got some more questions. Let's talk about services. We've got three leases that are expiring.
Yes, sir.
You wanted our feedback, didn't you? Well, let's, let's look at that.
Let's go to the next slide. Okay, we're going to go to the next slide, and, and may I give the recommendations, and then I, I would certainly want to, you know. Okay, so, the recommendations, first of all, we're taking, this is the district's recommendation to the, to, to the Chancellor and her, in, in respect to her Board. So, the, the Corporate Service Alliance, this lease should be, we, the district is looking at it from two perspectives, from the economic perspective and the strategic and partnership perspective. From the strategic and partnership perspective, corporate service needs to maintain a relationship with the Alliance Group who helps them generate some of their corporate leads. They also need to have visibility in this corporate center, which is the hub of where all these companies are being produced. The district recommends that the corporate service organization, however, move to the Center for Excellence for Aviation and Transportation and Logistics within two years or less. So, that is our recommendation, and the reason that we're recommending this period is for the following items. Facilities will need time to build out and be able to move them from the Alliance Building to, to the OWTL, the CATL Building. Corporate services needs to always address, since this is expiring in, in September thirty-one, they still have to address immediate needs, and they also have to transition their customers to a new location. In addition, the Alliance Group needs to be sequenced in this move we're leaving. There may even be a possibility that, that you may have to leave a press in that corporate center, but not at that size, but that is a, a discussion that can be done. And the Alliance team is also a great partner with TCC, as they're the ones who are providing us many of the leads that we use in that area. All right? The CIC, we are asking that, to that, to be renewed. The Genesis United Methodist Church, due to the service to the community, we're asking for that, we're recommending that that be renewed. The James Gwin is actually paid buyer grant, so I think we, we want that to continue. We're recommending that. The Northbrooks Record Management, there is a plan to move the Imogen and the records to the Riverside Warehouse. Upon moving that to the warehouse, then you can consider a buyout. A conversation, however, will have to happen with the courses that are presently being taught for upholstery, floral, planning, and.
Senior education.
Senior education, all right. So, they, they still, and when, when I heard this, I thought, in my mind, in my simplistic mind, that it doesn't, it takes a tremendous amount of space when you're doing floral and when you're doing upholstery. I, I actually spend a lot of time talking to the people, so you need a lot more space than, than people imagine, so it will, that, so the second part of that lease, we'll have to discuss where that happens because I, I don't know. And the Tarrant County Workforce, that lease expires in 2024, so there's no action required at this time. The Water Gardens, it doesn't expire, expire till 2018. I'm saying that, the district is saying there's no action at this time. Yes, ma'am?
The Tarrant County Workforce and UTA Continuing Education. I'm looking at this list of off-site training centers. I'm, I'm guessing that this is the one that is on Mitchell Street in Arlington. Is that correct? Do the.
Yes, ma'am. It's West Mitchell Street near.
On the campus.
Yeah.
Are we, are we sharing?
We are.
The expense, the lease expense with UTA and anyone else, or is it, is the workforce paying?
I believe it's being shared, ma'am, but I can check on that.
Go back to the previous slide where the amount is. Seventy-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Is that our portion?
I think, I believe, I can check. I believe it's our portion. That is a large facility, ma'am.
It is. Are we sharing, are the other people in the partnership also paying?
I want to check on that, ma'am.
And I would have the same question.
On which one?
The corporate services is all ours, right?
That is a, a self-contained space. You're correct. That is not a shared space. That is correct.
And the records management is ours?
That is a self, that is a fully, a space that is fully utilized by TCC. That is correct.
Okay. And the church, the Genesis United Methodist Church?
We do not own that. We're just using that.
I understand, I understand that. So, we're the only tenants or users of that space?
What they said from, from, when I talked to them, was that they're just asking us to cover the utility cost of it.
Yeah, that's cheap.
Three thousand, yeah.
Yeah, because that's the number, that's what they were asking, because since it's a church, they didn't feel, they asked us if we could cover that, and that is the number that they came up. It's a, it's a rather large church, and, but I cannot tell you that they, they have a lot of different programs. I cannot tell you if they're charging other programs something. I, I could certainly find that out for you.
And then, there's some other centers on, on this list. Castleberry at Reach High School in River Oaks. The East Side Learning Opportunities Center on East Lancaster. Are, are those not considered leases? E-Skills Library and Job Center on Stark Street. North Side Learning Opportunities Center at Wells Fargo Bank on North Main. I think that building's closed, actually. So, those, those would not be considered part of our lease list?
This is not.
You didn't obviously visit those.
I, I guess not, ma'am. They may be fallen under a grant or something, but I can certainly find out for you. These are the, the ones that we're actually carrying in our lease portfolio.
Do you, do you have a sense of what the, the usage is? How many people, how many students, how many participants there are at each of the centers? Would that be difficult to?
No, it wouldn't be difficult. We could come back to you with those numbers. I did talk to them, but I don't have the official numbers. I could come back to you and tell you how many courses, what's the enrollment, and the frequency of the courses. We did ask them, and typically, on, on some of the courses, for example, on the Genesis, it's, it's going to vary. On the CIC, they said they're actually reaching out, that they're small courses. It's not a very large space. On the Record Management, on the Continuing Education course, what I asked them, it's, the numbers are not going to be large because if you have to have people working, when you do upholstery, you must have a work center for each person, and that works center is, if you think about it, would be about maybe one point five square meters, something like, like maybe three seats by three seats like that. So, you would have about twenty to twenty-five. But Mrs. Appleman, I, I, I would, I want to give you the exact numbers, and we, we can certainly come back to you with those numbers.
And I'm guessing that the staffing of these centers come under CIE for the most part?
Well.
The people who work there and teach there, and are they our, our people?
You know, I know.
Yes, I see Mr. Rand says, he's claiming them, like they're, they're, they're CIE staff.
Yeah.
So, they come out of your budget?
They are, they are. 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 They are.
Our elevator speech piece.
Okay.
To send Dr. McClendon back out on the road.
We are on a lot of sites that we do not pay.
Yes.
No.
That's what I wondered. I don't know about those, but we are on several sites, we're out North Side and we don't pay.
Right, the Halton City Library comes to mind, so, anyway, interesting, thank you.
Now, we have a projected valuation increase of about seventeen million dollars conservatively, increased tuition of about 1.4 million. We put on the board for you 2,691,879 of a Celt request without the faculty, which we're still vetting. For dual credit faculty, we've put on the board for you 1,380,000. There'll be some offset with the increase in tuition, but I can't predict, even though we've got a request for a certain number of sections, I can't predict how many students will be in those sections, so I can't predict for you what this tuition increase will be. But the total on those two numbers is 3,695,679. And again, we're here today to get your feedback so we know how to narrow that down, and that will be modified before the August fourth workshop. So we're asking for your input on what we do with, what we've put up on the board, and, you know, what you want to see different, we want your input about our discussions on the faculty and how we've vetted it, and anything else that you've seen that we've put up tonight, or something we haven't put up tonight, we want to hear from you.
Any more questions or comments?
All right, I, I guess I note that we had a substantial staffing increase last year despite essentially flat enrollment, and this is another fairly substantial staff increase. I'm not so bothered by the growth areas, I mean, you have areas where you have high attendance and you have waiting lists, it makes sense to add staff and to grow those. What I'm not seeing, though, is any adjustments on the other end, I mean, okay, so if we're having high growth in some areas, yet we're flat, that means that other areas are not, and we don't seem to be willing to make adjustments for those areas that we're not being so prosperous in. I also think that dual ed is, is now, is going to continue to be a high-growth area and probably is a, is a, is a good investment. I note reluctance to move from some of these leased facilities. I really don't really believe that we cannot adjust to move in our Corporate Services at Alliance to the facility, the aviation facility, but I, I can see us bouncing all around the politics of it, and at this point, I think I'd just as soon stick around there a while. I'm not sure I'm in favor of a two-year lease, that seems excessive, so if we could just stick there another year and then plan to make the move, that would be good. The foundation has got a good location there, but we have plenty of premium property there, and, you know, I really would hope that we're moving in the direction of moving the foundation headquarters to some of our existing space when that lease, you know, has expired. I don't see any point in worrying about subleasing it and going ahead and making that move now, it just never seems to work out. And that's, I guess that's kind of my basic reaction to it. I might think of some more as you go along. Mr. Greenhill, you got anything?
Yes, I'm sorry, you, I needed help to do that. You're absolutely right, you run into a little politics with Alliance, and I'm in favor of sticking with at least two years, and I think that's a good compromise. I think what Alliance, or actually Chase is the...
JP Morgan.
Jackie Morgan Chase is the less or, and I think they were asking maybe for a little bit longer, and I think that the two-year thing is a good compromise. I'm having a senior moment when it comes to the maintenance fund and money being left over, and the list that we have of, it's not maintenance, it's infrastructure, I'm still concerned, very concerned, that we are ignoring infrastructure. I hope that at some point, I, this money being left over and being, I don't understand, I have difficulty following that from a, from an economics point of view, from a simple economic point of view, but I think that at some point, we're going to have to really take a look at our infrastructure and maybe spend some of that money that's left over on infrastructure, I don't know, I'm missing something there, but we need to, I kind of have the feeling, as I said before, that you guys are, you know, you have your budget meetings, you say, well, we can postpone this, but can you really? I think we need to analyze that very, very carefully at some point, maybe not, we're going to have a new chancellor, we're going to have to do it anyway, and he'll probably want to do that. But staffing-wise, I agree with, we're increasing staff, which I can appreciate, but maybe there are things that are not going as planned, and we could cut back on those, maybe so, I don't know. Y'all have got the information, you gave us a bunch of charts and a bunch of letters and a bunch of, I mean, a bunch of numbers, and it's pretty hard for us to digest those numbers at one meeting, maybe you could send them to us and we could look at them more carefully, but that's what I have to say right now.
We will, we will send them to you.
Of course you will, I know you.
So, I have a question, are the salaries that are projected based on the current salary scale, or are they projected on the basis of the future salary scale?
Current.
So then we'll need adjustments to those.
Yes.
Let me see if I can do this. I concur with trustee Carter on a lot of his comments, and I think there is a valid point of study for those leases, and as it relates to the foundation, I would be very supportive of moving them to one of our fine locations. In addition, I don't know about the UTA Opportunity Center, but it'd be interesting to know how we share leases with other folks in that facility, it is large, but it'd be a good study to understand the lion's share that we perhaps have versus others and how that's dissected. There is something else that I had in mind that I can't recall at the moment, but, anyway, those are my comments for now.
Number one, I think dual credit and early college high school expenses are certainly a good investment in educating those people who need it the most, I think we're wise to do that. On the leases, I would like to see revenues or other benefits that we accrue as a result of having those facilities. One of the things that we've heard about recently is, because we do have a flat enrollment, basically, is what we're going to do in our recruitment efforts, because we've heard how competitive now the education market is, and there's a lot of people out there that, that come and take our tests and then don't, don't enroll, and I'd like to have some kind of presentation, some plan, that we're going to recruit people and actively, we don't even talk about that, but it's something that we're going to have to, because we're the best, best deal in town, and we've got to spread that word, and we've got to get more, more students coming to TCC. Another thing, you talked about Fund Forty, I didn't hear anything about Fund Seventy and the relationship between the two funds, and how Fund Seventy is, how we accumulate funds and that, and how they go back and forth between Fund Forty and Fund Seventy, and I'd really like to get an understanding of what, what happens there, and how much we have in Fund Seventy, and what that's allocated for, and those kinds of things. And of course, I think with the new, the new chancellor, I continue to think that we need to develop additional revenue streams for down the road, you don't turn that on overnight, it's, that's a five, ten, fifteen-year investment in time and effort, and I think we need to be moving more in that direction so that we maintain our long-term stability and financial stability.
Thank you. On our next presentation, we will address the Fund Seventy and Fund Forty also. On the strategic enrollment plan, at your retreat, we had had a presentation from Noel Levitz on it, but we will continue to report back to you, it's still, at that point, it was still in the planning stages, and we didn't have a lot of detail for you, but we are taking baby steps towards that, and we'll have a plan in place.
From, from Lyle Levitz?
There you go again. Ms. Ayala?
Oh, thank you for all the work that y'all put into preparing this for us. Couple of things, I also concur with something that trustee Carter said relative to the Alliance facility. I think once we get more detailed mark on, you know, the courses, number of people attending, things like that, that will help us in our decision, at least for me and my decision-making. I'd also like to find out, as far as the two-year period, I was thinking maybe we could just, you know, complete the rest of this year, since we're in the middle of the year, and then just basically look at wrapping it up at 2017 as a possibility, so it really is a year and a half, and I don't know, was that, was that what y'all were thinking, or were you thinking of going to 2018?
The lease term is over at nine thirty-one, September thirty-one, and I've, I've been told that if I didn't want to, if I entered into anything other than a two-year lease, and that it would be over a nine thirty-one, so...
Okay, that's fine, thank you for that clarification. Also, I'm supportive of looking at moving the foundation over to the, to another facility, especially here downtown, if that's feasible. And then as far as the staffing, I'm support the dual credit staffing, I think we need to look at that. What I would like for us to do is see where we can leverage any staffing as possible, I don't know if that's a possibility, but if we can, that would be great. The other thing I wanted to find out is if we could look at, when, on the chart, it had what we're, the square footage, if we can have a breakdown even of what it is we're paying per square foot, that would be helpful. I mean, I'm sitting here trying to calculate it, but it would be helpful to actually see it. And then, one of the other things I wanted to see is whether or not some of these facilities where we have leases that'll be wrapping up within the next two, year and a half or two, one of the things we learned when we were in San Antonio was, you know, maybe we should work closer with our industry partners, and so if we're offering some of these courses that obviously we're going to produce some people that would be on the workforce, that maybe we could look to partnering with some of these folks and say, you know, you have the facilities, we have the folks, maybe we wouldn't necessarily have to pay for the lease of a facility, if we could maybe, you know, use their facility or somehow, you know, partner with them and they could invest a little bit of money in that, and that could maybe be something that Ben's group could look at, but, you know, since they have a skin in the game, it could be something we could explore.
One of those community centers, by the way, was about twenty bucks a square foot, it seems to me like there are plenty of facilities out there that we, that would be happy to have us for far less costly lease, I don't know why that one is so much, was it Grant Street, what was it?
Grant Lane.
Grant Lane? Is that a commercial building? What is that? Why is it so, I mean, why is it so expensive? You don't know why some, I know, it was a rhetorical question.
Well, I, I'm going to, you want me to, some of the, well, I certainly am not a specialist on real estate, but a lot of times, people have to look at when the lease commenced, because that drives a lot, the, some of the leases in that period that happened will be different than today, but we could certainly give you a...
It's eight hundred, it's a small space, as you say, which means the capacity is very low, very slow, very little. Somebody have their little phone out, divide twenty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-four by eight hundred and forty-two thousand, then you're going to end up with twenty-two bucks a square foot, somewhere around there.
Right, and it's right, that is an area that doesn't have a lot of space, it's right next to Lockheed, and that's probably the only building, but we could come back and give you a valuation on what's the lease, what's the market rate, and maybe that would, is that what you're asking us to do, sir?
Yes, it is.
Yes, that'd be helpful.
I'm guessing...
I mean, it's the only one there that seems like it's out of line, I mean, the UTA ones, I noticed they're charging us about what we're charging them, it's a tit-for-tat kind of deal, but around fourteen bucks a square foot, so...
I'm wondering if that Grant Lane...
That seems, that seems kind of excessive, and I think we could probably do better than that.
Is that owned by Lockheed Martin? It's called the Pat Lane Center, who, and Pat was there...
Well, I don't know if it's owned, it's right next to the, to the Lockheed.
It'd be interesting to know who actually owns the property.
Anybody on the Celt have an interest in CLC Incorporated Community Learning Center? Just checking, just checking. Okay, well, let's, can we check that? It seems excessive to me.
We will.
If I made, Angela, he mentioned something about community centers, I know that I've worked with Lisa Benedetti over at the Northwest Campus about partnering with some community centers, and so maybe we can explore some other options there.
Those of you who want to move the foundation, their lease isn't up for two years, are you suggesting that we move them before the expiration of the lease?
I was not, Bill was.
Okay.
No, no.
I should be sure.
I think it was...
I think we didn't realize that the lease had so much time to go, I was sort of, I thought it was expiring more.
It's two more.
Shortly.
Okay, and Ms. Vandergriff has recovered her memory.
Well, thank you. I have a question as it relates to dual credit. I'm not very clear on how we operate with the charter schools. I know some on that list are fairly small and focused on innovation, technology, STEM. Are we supplementing a full course load for them, or is this...
Dr. Gates, why don't you come to the microphone, please?
No, ma'am, we are not supplementing a full course load, they are simply offering their students very small opportunities to experience dual credit. So, as I mentioned before, it is a course, probably a semester, that we are offering there, but we are not offering anywhere near the capacity that we're doing for our independent school districts. So no, we're not supplementing their program.
By the way, just for the record, charter schools are public schools, okay?
Yes, they are.
And I have a comment in regards to moving the foundation, that consideration requires a philosophy discussion, and because that is a, considered a district facility, and so as we consider relocating district facilities to a campus, we have to have that other discussion, which may have been the elephant in the room in previous years. Other comments or questions? We're, we're out of time, I need to call the regular board meeting to order. Thank all of you who helped...
Yes, thank you.
...create and present this information to us, and please know we're very interested and eager to work with you and look forward to your next report. So... All right, so with that, we will begin our regular board meeting business, and we start with two special presentations. I'd ask Ms. Robinson to introduce those.
Yes, first, we have a presentation from TCC Connect, Dr. Carlos Morales and his director of Weekend College are going to present on the Weekend College model.
Good evening, Madam Chancellor, Ms. Appleman, members of the board, we are delighted this evening to share with you some of the success, successes we have been having in our operation, specifically, we will talk about how we have started the process to accelerate success and completion through Weekend College. So what you see here pretty much is a summary of the operation that you have been supporting for this time. We started with ten cohorts, and recently, in the 2016... We started with ten cohorts, and recently, in the 2016 graduation, we had thirty-five graduates for Weekend College, and all that occurred in eighteen months. On the next slide, you see pretty much as a, as an element in terms of background, that this is an accelerated degree plan, and the genesis for this program is based on data from the Almanac of 2015 that says that TCC students, on average, take four-point-eight years, and when they graduate, they do that with ninety-two semester hours, when, when the program has been designed for sixty hours and two years. And certainly, this initiative contributes to the National Completion Agenda and certainly increase graduation rates. I'm going to ask Mr. David Pierce, the director of Weekend College, to provide you with the additional details in regards to the operation.
Good evening, how are you? So the National Completion Agenda is really talking about how we had a real problem with people that were taking, you know, basically four and a half years, ninety-two credit hours to get through. So what we decided to create was a degree plan where they would get their sixty hours done in an eighteen-month period. And so by doing this, we, we offer hybrid learning community classes, where the students get together into a group, and they will do face-to-face, about twenty-five percent of it, they'll meet for an hour and fifty minutes, one day a week, for one class, and then about seventy-five percent of it is done online. They meet for seven-week sessions, so the students are in two seven-week sessions, two classes, followed by two classes for seven weeks, which makes four classes a semester, which makes them full-time students. We also do an hour of student development with them each week, and the student development gets into learning styles, how do I do note-taking, how do I do time management, how do I apply for FAFSA, how do I apply for transfer? And the students can get their associate's degree in eighteen months by following this track. So we have a Friday night session, which goes from, basically from five till ten p.m., and the Saturday section goes from nine in the morning till two in the afternoon. Students have a choice of either one or the other, they choose which one they want to get into. Students that are coming into the class, we're looking for them to be TSI-compliant in all areas, including reading, writing, and mathematics. We'd like for them to be first-time in college, we'd like for them to be committed to an eighteen-month course of study, they need to be comfortable with learning because of the online technology, they need to be a motivated, independent learner. So where are we now? In the spring of 2016, we ended up offering forty-six sections just during that one semester. We've had a total of three-hundred-and-thirty students who have joined the cohort since we started, less than two years ago, about, about a year and a half ago. Now, what we do is we open up the program for anybody, for, for just our Weekend College students to enroll in classes, so they have a set course ready to go, they know what they're doing. Everyone in Weekend College knows exactly what they're taking next semester and the semester after that, they know their graduation date, they know everything as they're going through. Then we open the program up for anybody else who happens to need a seat, somebody who just needs, I need one government class to graduate, I need one history class to graduate, and we put them in there and fill them up. And that's how we end up with one thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-two students that have taken at least one Weekend College course, and this is basically in five semesters. Sections offered, one-hundred-and-sixty-four sections that we've offered through 2016. The total amount of seats that we filled, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-six seats, and that, and that's through spring. We have already added another three-hundred during the summer session, just so, that's, that's not up there, but just so you know that. So where are we now? Last year, we were in our second semester last graduation, and we had three students who graduated, and they personally came to me and said, "I could not have graduated if that class was not available for me in that accelerated hybrid format, because I'm working full-time." So we took credit, even though we didn't do the whole thing, I still took credit for it. We got three graduates last semester. And we tell, we sell this as eighteen months or less, because in eighteen months, you're able to get all the courses done. But if you decide to step out just a little bit and decide, "I'm going to do one more class in addition to this one here," you can finish in less than the eighteen months. Because of that, we had two graduates in December, which basically took four semesters for them to graduate, one of them is here with us tonight. In May sixteen, we had our very first graduation ceremony, we had thirty-five graduates from the Weekend College, ten of those were from the original cohort that started eighteen months ago, which is exactly what the plan was, to go through eighteen months and graduate. As far as our success rate goes, we started off as kind of an open enrollment, not sure who we wanted to get into the class, and because of the accelerated hybrid, hybrid format, went up with about fifty-five-point-nine percent success rate during the very first semester we offered it. From then on, we started doing some really aggressive advising on the students, we started talking to them about, "Are you sure you know what you're getting yourself into?" Because the Weekend College is not for everybody. You need to be dedicated, you need to be network savvy, you need to be up on it. We also ended up doing the student development with them every week, teaching them how to be better students, teaching them how to, to reach out to the resources that are available to them, which caused in one year, our success rate to go up to seventy-three-point-one percent. And I think we're going to skip, this is the one we're watching, okay.
My name is Gina Feng, and I'm proud to be part of the first graduating class of the Weekend College here at TCC. I had been thinking about my future for a while, and so I had been thinking about returning to school. I met with David Pierce, the director of Weekend College, and by next fall, I was already enrolled. The Weekend College appealed to me because I felt that it offered the most flexibility. I do hold a full-time position, and I could go to school and get a college degree and still work during the day. I have really enjoyed my experience here at the Weekend College. It has been flexible. I believe the staff at the Weekend College helped to facilitate me reaching my goals in college. My time here at Tarrant County in the Weekend College has been very brief, it's eighteen months, and in eighteen months, I was able to meet the requirements for a, an associate's degree. I do believe that they have really helped me to immerse fully in the college experience. The development program that they have, the development class that we do, we talk about succeeding in college, and how we learn, and financial aid, scholarships, time management, and that's all been very helpful. After I graduate, I plan to take a few classes here at TCC, science classes, and look forward to going on to nursing school here at TCC. I'd like to say thank you to the staff here at the Weekend College. I would also like to thank my professors, and I believe that the staff and the professors really do live to help students find the success that is really within reach.
Okay, so that was, that was Gina, and Gina is kind of like the star student, because she started off with, "I don't think I can do this," to the point of, "You will do this, girl, and you will get..." So she ended up getting Phi Theta Kappa scholarships, she got the Coca-Cola Future Leadership scholarships, so we're real, real proud of her.
Do you have a student? You said you had a student?
Yeah, I've got James, where's James?
There he is, okay.
He's one of ours that graduated in December from the early. And without telling too much of his story, he was, he was working at this place called Radio Shack, that was like, and he said, he said, "I may not have a job very much longer, I better get me an education." And so, and so you can ask him anything you want to, but one thing I want to throw in is that, after he graduated in December, his daughter is now in classes with us, so. So you want to ask him any questions?
That's all right.
And we also have faculty members with us also, that, that are part of the Weekend College, I'm not sure if you had any questions for them. I did want to share this, if you want to ask him a question while I'm passing this out here.
Ask the faculty to go.
Do you have any questions for James?
Now, just tell us about your experience. Was it what you expected? Was it less, more than? You have some, you have some ideas for us?
Well, I was kind of faced with a unique situation. At the time that I joined the, the college, I already had thirty-one years of experience with Radio Shack in the IT department, but I didn't have a degree. So with the impending bankruptcy coming up, I started looking for a job, and no one would talk to me because I didn't have an education, because the first thing they filter on in LinkedIn and job sites is the degree. But I mean, I can do the job, I just didn't have a degree. So that's when I met up with Mr. Pierce and got involved in it. I'll admit, it was a tough fifteen months that I did, I did take on the extra classes to get done early. I was in a rush, I was losing my job. But it was a very rewarding experience of the initial cohorts. We still talk, made some great friendships and stuff, and the faculty that's here, I was a classmate for all of them, I enjoyed my time there. But like Mr. Pierce said, it's not for everyone, it's very demanding, especially if you're carrying a, you know, full-time job. So I got lucky that I found a job just before graduation, so that changed my degree plan a little bit. So my last two semesters, I was free to take whatever I wanted, because I didn't have to go for anything specific, so I just stayed general. So I took like music, sociology, geology, just took a wide range, just to experience everything, since I never experienced college.
How many hours did you end up with?
I think I'm somewhere in the area of around sixty-two to sixty-four. So just enough to, to get in, and then I, I didn't continue on since I already had my, kind of met my goal, so.
Is your, is your job in IT? Is your job in IT now? What, what's your job?
I am a CRM, a senior CRM analyst, I handle all the marketing accounts for Honda and Acura. So.
This is Pika Chapman, she's another one of our graduates here, she started off as one of our very first cohort students, and tell them who you saw the fellow teacher.
Well, right now, I'm in the medical field, and I went back to school because I have, like he, I have fifteen years of bookkeeping experience, and so, you know, nobody wants to talk to you if you don't have a degree, or they don't want to pay you the salary or the money that is due to you. So I went back, and like he said, that we kind of just crunched it in and working and coming to school.
Congratulations.
You know, I've been, I've, one of the things I've seen over and over again is that one of the miracles of education is when a cohort group gels, when all of a sudden, they like each other, they, they, they energize off of each other, they, they learn from each other, they catch each other's mistakes. It's amazing, by the way, how similar the grades are in a cohort group sometime for a test, because what one doesn't know, none of them know, because they've, they've all studied together. But anyway, it, it really does seem to maybe be one of those educational strategies that, that really works. Did you enjoy it, or was it?
Yes, I did, because it allowed me an opportunity to still work, and, you know, be able to, you know, spend time with family, but also include, you know, studying and just going to school. I picked Friday nights, so I would, you know, leave work and go to school from six to ten. And weekend was just homework.
Best investment you ever made.
And what are you doing now?
I still work in the medical field, transitioning, you know, into, back into the corporate world.
Okay.
One more speaker?
Yeah, I wanted to, this is our, this is our music instructor, we also have our English instructor, and our history instructor, and who else do we have in here? We have our Texas Government Instructor, so they came to support the students, they love these students, they're asking for more hours, okay, because they really love working with these students.
Can we get the faculty to all stand, the Weekend faculty, please, so we can recognize you? Thank you for your work.
Oh, and Gina showed up too. Hi Gina, we just saw your video, so.
There's our movie star, Gina, stand up.
I wanted to share this with you really quickly, this is the degree plan that we use here, so that students know that, that what they're getting into, they know exactly what next semester, what is?
I'm sorry, speaking to the.
So they know exactly what they're getting into next semester. If you talk to any student that's in the Weekend College, they know what they're signed up for this semester, what they're going to be signed up for next semester, and they can tell you their graduation date. And that makes a big difference, where a lot of students just go to school and go, "I don't know, I'm finishing sometime." Everyone in Weekend College knows exactly when they're going to be done, and they make plans for it.
Could we take a photo?
Come on, faculty, students. I'm guessing, Mr. Pierce, that your program demonstrates student advising at its very best.
It's very, it's aggressive advising, yeah, to the.
Got on down here, girls and boys, come on, let's go. We're trying to get this to two columns away.
I saw you come in, I thought, "What are they doing?" Whoa. Oh, thank you. We need one of these. You've taken some big steps, and we'll look forward to monitoring your progress, and thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Robinson, our second present, presentation?
We have two Mastery of Teaching presentations. The first one is Mark Evans, and as Mark's coming to the podium, I would ask that you all get out your cellphones, because he's going to have you do a test at the end of his presentation. Mark is a, an almost doctor, Assistant Professor of Psychology at Trinity River, so I'm going to have him tell you about his research project.
Madam Chair, Madam Chancellor, thank you, board, thank you for having me. Again, my name is Mark Evans, I'm an Associate Professor of Psychology at the Trinity River Campus, and I conducted a study on inappropriate use of technology in the classroom.
Oh.
And.
My teachers are students.
There were a plethora of findings, yet I will share just a few with you here today. Of those are social awareness and multitasking while engaging in higher education. With respect to social awareness, academic and social conditioning, in a survey of over five-hundred-and-fifty students, what was understood is they're learning this in secondary school and bringing it to the college classroom. Secondly, it's a matter of maturity. One more. Now, just so we're reading from the same book, maturity is a psychological term used to indicate how a person responds to circumstances or environment in an appropriate manner. This response is generally learned rather than instinctive, and is not determined by one's age. Maturity encompasses being aware of relative connectedness, relative connectedness, and the correct time and place to behave and knowing when to act appropriately, according to the situation, culture, environment, community, or society in which one lives. Now, if we look closer at this, when it discusses generally learned rather than instinctive, what it's referring to is if everyone acted on instinct rather than learned behavior, there would be no stability. Secondly, it discusses relative connectedness. What it's referring to there is if everyone thought about themselves versus the people that they are connected to, we probably wouldn't make good decisions. Collectively, we understood that maturity was a big part of this. Okay, yeah, there's a, okay, we'll use this. In a study conducted by the Ohio State University Physiologist Clayson and Haley, and they made me refer to it as. and they made me refer to it as the Ohio State University, they cite that it is physiologically impossible for neuronal and, neuronal visual and audio pathways to engage in higher learning while multitasking. So what I'd like to do is, Board, could you take out your cellphones? And if everyone, when I say go, if you guys could text Ms. Robinson. Not until I say go. And while you are texting Ms. Robinson, I'm going to give you a brief overview of the concept of love. Okay? I'm writing a book on that.
On what? Something about love?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I heard. Oh, you, I wasn't supposed to be texting.
Not yet. Now, if you would, text Ms. Robinson, when I say go, text Ms. Robinson a text while I go over the concept of love. Okay? Go. The concept of love includes three components, intimacy, passion, and commitment. Intimacy is the sharing component. Passion is the physical component. Keep going. And commitment is the final component, which means common goals between two people. Okay? Stop. How many text messages did you get?
Everybody in the audience is texting.
Okay. Now, could you guys give me the three components of love?
Intimacy, passion, and commitment.
Did you write those down?
Yeah, text them.
When you, when they file the open records request for your phone, that's going to be kind of embarrassing for you.
Well, at base, what this comes down to is it is physiologically impossible for a person to engage the neural pathways for higher learning and multitasking at the same time. Physically, it cannot be done. And it's this type of communication that we need to have with our students to give them an understanding as to why not. Another thing, we, as a part of that study, there was an experiment. And in Classroom A, the instructor gave their rules. In Classroom B, the instructor did the same thing, but the rules in Classroom A were reinforced. At the end of the semester, the grades in Classroom A were at least a grade higher than the grades in Class B because the instructor reinforced the boundaries. Same class, same book, same everything. Questions, comments?
Not the slightest bit surprised. And by the way, I guess teaching at UTA a few years back, I, I was not letting students even have their phones out. And, and one of my other instructors, well, that's not the way students learn these days. You know, you have to let them use their phone, all this stuff. And I said, the problem is they're not learning. And so, same thing. And now I think it's, they've kind of come full circle around. But even now, I'll see some classes where students are up there, they're not taking notes, they're just doing emails, they're doing other things and are texting. And it's all out, they're buzzing all over the place. There's no way. You know, I'm not surprised, but I think you're kind of reinforcing what I already firmly believe is true. Thank you for that. By the way, I left my cellphone in the conference room. Otherwise, I would have sent Ms. Robinson a vivid message.
What, what do you mean by reinforce? How, how strong is that?
Well, they were asked not to use the cellphone during class and/or given the opportunity to put it away or see student services. And literally, the first two weeks of class, the people in Room A, there was no cellphone use throughout the rest of the semester. And in Classroom B, it happened throughout.
Sure. And how many of them got into accidents on the way home from texting?
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
Then our last presentation is from Paul Leister, Associate Professor of Biology for South Campus. And he's done research in an effort to increase student success in his High Enrollment, Low Success Rate Anatomy and Physiology course.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor, members of the board, good evening. My research, actually, let me introduce myself. My name is Paul Leister and I'm an Associate Professor at South Campus. And I teach majors biology, non-majors biology, environmental biology, microbiology, anatomy and physiology, and whatever else they throw at me. But those are the ones that I do the most. And as you know, some of our science classes are high enrollment and low success courses. And so my interest was in finding ways that we could increase the success rates in particularly our anatomy and physiology classes for all of those students who come in and are interested in becoming medical professionals. And we, as faculty, get very frustrated when we see so many of those students really struggle, especially in that particular class. So, next slide, please. So it is a prerequisite, anatomy and physiology is a prerequisite for any of our allied health programs. And the students who go into that know that this is going to be a course that really counts for them. This is a course, it's a Bedrock course for their entire degree plan. And many of the programs that they're applying to, including our own nursing program, really expect students to get As in those courses. And it's very difficult to get into those programs without very high grades. Now, if we are getting success rates of only sometimes sixty percent, and sometimes that's the high end, then our concern is what can we do to improve the success rates for those students without sacrificing the rigor of the course? And so we've looked at different options as faculty, but we run into the problem that there are no prerequisites for the course and we can't add additional courses because of the sixty-hour limit to many of those programs. And it's already so packed full. So what I did as a way of trying to gather some data to address this problem was I implemented a commercial product that was a diagnostic test produced by Pearson Publication. And I gave that to a group of students over, two different classes over two different semesters and asked them to take that test the first day of class. It was actually an online test, but I assigned it the first day of class and they had to do it at home. And their scores were automatically sent to me through this online product. It was a seventy-question test, so it was fairly thorough. And it tested over basic concepts that we would hope that they would come into class with. What I did then was take a look at those scores and compare those scores on the diagnostic test to their overall performance in the class. Next. And as you can see, there was a correlation between the diagnostic test scores and their performance in the class. And so on the left side of that screen, the purple and blue bars represent, the, the blue part is the mean diagnostic test score. So that's what they got at the beginning of the semester. The purple lines show that that's the average of how the students in each of those groups did as a whole in the course. So if you look at the bottom of those columns, you can see that those who earned a seventy percent or higher on the diagnostic test score tended to do quite well in the course. And if you look over on the right side, you'll see the breakdown of how those students did. So seventy-one percent of the students in that group that got a seventy percent or higher on the diagnostic test score actually got an A in the class. Twenty-one percent got a B, seven percent got a C, which means every single student out of those students that were involved in those two courses over two semesters passed the class with an A, B, or a C if they got a seventy percent or higher on the diagnostic test. Those students who were in the fifty to sixty-nine percent range on the diagnostic test ended up with mixed grades. And that's because, you know, they were coming in kind of maybe weekly prepared, but they were able to, in some cases, study, learn some study skills, and improve their scores and in some cases, get As. In some cases, ended up with Bs, in some cases, ended up with Cs, Ds, and Fs. So it varied for that category. The final category, those students who earned less than a fifty percent on the diagnostic test score actually did quite poorly. And you can see there that more than half of the students ended up with a D or an F in the class. And a few of them worked real hard and were able to bring their grades up to an A, but the As were actually a pretty small, a small section of the course compared to those who did well on the diagnostic test. Now, what that did was give us some data that we could then say, maybe we could implement this across the district. And so, go ahead and to the next one. What we were able to do is identify some students in this small group and say, okay, if we can identify these high-risk students by a test like that, is there something that we could do to go further with that that might help us at the district level? So we have gathered together a number of interested faculty who have seen this data. And we've created a district-wide academic inquiry team. And we've called ourselves PASS. And PASS stands for Pathways for Achieving Success in Science. And we've written our own diagnostic test. And we've used that for two semesters now. We've given it to all of the students in majors biology and anatomy and physiology one to evaluate how accurate that test is towards their performance in the class. And our goal is to develop a tool that will allow us to easily identify high-risk students and then put them in an alternate pathway that would allow them to address those weaknesses before they take the course for credit. And that's where we are right now with this. So I'm very excited that this research has actually led to something that might make a significant change. And I think that was it for that. This was presented at a conference. In fact, Terry Michelle and I were able to present at that conference at the same time. We were both there for different things, but it all related to the Mastery of Teaching Institute. I presented a poster on the results of this. And I got a lot of feedback from faculty and administrators at other colleges across the country who have the same problem we do. Lots and lots of students signing up for anatomy and physiology. That's the first science they ever take, they bomb out of it, and then they drop out because they figure they can't cut it. And so they were very interested in what we're doing to try to address that problem. And that's the poster that I presented at that conference. Are there any questions?
You, you talk about alternative pathways. Are you, are you trying to save them in the STEM? Or are you trying to say, hey, maybe you ought to be considered, considering a different field? Or both?
Well, our first goal is to try to keep them in that field. We don't want to turn them away from their goals. So our goal is to either provide some kind of a success course or provide a boot camp. We've run a number of different ideas across the table. And in fact, Greta Bowling, who is one of the members of our district-wide team, presented at Academic Council this morning. And they were discussing the options for that. So we don't have a, a specific plan in mind yet because there are so many things that we have to consider for that. But we're trying to make it so that the student can take that, some kind of a course that would then prepare them either take it before they start anatomy and physiology and majors biology or take it at the same time as an eight-week course at the beginning of the semester. And doing it at the same time is kind of a challenge, but that seems easier to implement. But it would be to help kind of strengthen their weak skills and keep them in the class, keep them in their degree plan.
Have you considered using this test to encourage students that might not be thinking of a STEM pathway, to go into a STEM pathway?
Well, if we can implement it at the district level, ideally when they register, we could make that as an option and say, hey, if you're interested in going into this field, see how well you do on this test. And that would be an ideal situation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations and thanks for your innovative thinking. What about the possibility of maybe introducing this even at a, at a junior or senior level in high school? And that way we can kind of get a gauge and figure out where they are at that point. And if there's any developmental classes that need to be taken prior to entering college, that would do that.
We would love to be able to do that. In fact, we've talked about that, but that, you know, that's another big jump in being able to implement that, that early. But we would love, the earlier the better. Because the sooner the students know what their weaknesses are, the easier it is to help address those.
Sure. Thank you again.
Yes, we would love to be able to do that. Thank you.
Well, I heard several interesting things. First of all, I'm glad to know that we have biology for majors and biology for non-majors. I think there are many of us who went through college during my time would have really appreciated that. Because I was in science classes with all majors and that was, you know, really difficult for me, however. The second thing is that I'm very glad to, to know of the substantial research in which you're engaging. And I am excited that we would have this presentation made to us and that this has such great potential for helping so many more students to be more successful. And so I want to encourage you and PASS to really go full steam ahead. And I want to compliment you. I also heard the term your academic council, so I love that. I think that's a wonderful occurrence and you're to be complimented on that. I think sometimes we get so tied up with the dollars and the cents. And so I very much appreciate this academic presentation. I want to congratulate you and Terry and others who have made this presentation and to say that I hope we can take this district-wide so that all students can benefit from this.
Thank you very much. I hope so too. Thanks.
What a nice note to end on. Thank you so much. And I think it's photo op time again. So speaking of multitasking, you know, we've all been taught that unless we can do two or three things at a time, we just really are not making the benefit of our time. So the next time someone says that to you, you can tell them, no, research defies that. So maybe Jerry Ford had it right all the time, right? These, this young crowd, they don't even know what I'm talking about. Google it.
All right, we will proceed now. And I would ask approval of the minutes of the meeting of May nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Motion to approve. Second? Discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed? The minutes of June second, two thousand and sixteen. Motion to approve. Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And finally, the minutes of the June ninth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. Motion to approve. Mr. Heed?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
By the way, I did try to talk Dr. Sacks into making the donation for the Alan Sacks Sticky Center at your campus, sir, but he wanted the waterfall. We can only try.
I would now ask, motion to approve two items under the consent agenda. First being the recommendations for two thousand and sixteen, seventeen faculty promotion and rank and the awarding of tenure. And the second item, the consideration and approval of a proposed gift from Dr. Alan Sacks and the naming opportunity at the Trinity River Campus. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee reports, audit and finance. Mr. Carter?
Okay, the audit, finance committee did meet just a day or so ago. Beg your pardon?
Oh, there we go. We did meet a couple. Basically, we had a, one major item. We had done an audit of the overall budget just to determine if expenditures were being made from the budget as they were intended to be. Found quite clean and, and correct. The only item that we found that was out of place was the procedures for paying stipends to some upper-level employees was not according to code and system. We thought about killing the stipends entirely. I thought I'd just say that to see your faces.
Make sure you're listening.
Just to see if you're listening, you know? Everybody loves an internal audit until their ox is about to be gored. Have you noticed that? They get that. So basically, we'll just have to change the, the wording of the coding for it and, and to, to make it so that it's, so that it's appropriate. So that was, that was about that.
The governance committee meant to prepare tonight's agenda. Institutional planning. Ms. Vandergriff?
We will have our institutional planning committee this Monday, located at Greenhill School in Dallas. We'll be having colleagues from Dr. Gobin's campus and real estate and others to view the Performing Arts Center there. So we're looking forward to that, and we'll give you a full report after we come back. Thanks.
All right, we will get into now the consideration of various contracts. And again, if you're new in the audience, if we tend to seem to be whizzing through this, it's because we've had background information and the ability to ask questions and consider these items. So we'll start with item number 10. Consideration and approval of a five-year contract with Digarc for online academic catalog and curriculum management system in the amount of $453,586 over a five-year period. Dr. Joy Gates-Black.
This request is to automate two processes. First, our curriculum and instruction process and our college catalog, which currently is a very manual process. Our college catalog is online, but it is a static copy. It is a PDF file. And so, when changes are made through the curriculum and instruction process, we have to take the PDF file down and make those manual changes, which creates opportunities for errors to be made. And we're required by the Texas Higher Ed Coordinating Board and the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commissioned on Colleges to maintain an up-to-date catalog for our college, for our students, and certainly for our community. And so, having this automated catalog and curriculum instruction process would put us on par with where we need to be in order to manage the instruction at this institution.
And this will require six months to a year just to get in place?
Yes.
And so, we're anticipating the 2017-18 academic year. Motion to approve. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. Discussion?
And just, as I understood this, by the way, this manual process took about six people.
Yes.
So, and we end up replacing, but this is sort of typical too, is that we really make no plans to reduce staffing by that much, and by reducing, I would say even put those people in other openings as they come up. So instead, we have this expenditure, plus we still have the full expense of the six people. I think when we do these kinds of things, we need at least to make long-term plans to adjust the use of those personnel. Like I said, I'm not saying get rid of the people, but move them to other jobs instead of just keeping the six and eating almost half a million dollars as well. So, and we never seem to do that. We just continue to grow staff, even though we have this innovative technology that is intended to replace those people.
Well, Mr. Carter, we are actually reallocating those kinds of resources with our new AdAstra system. Earlier last year, when Mr. Marshall was here, we worked to divide the workload that was taking place in that area, and several of those folks did actually move into the information technology area to support AdAstra, so...
Were they add-ons?
Were they add-ons?
Yes, so you added to the total staff?
We did not have anyone doing, working on AdAstra, really looking at and managing our room occupancy information. So, this was an opportunity to utilize those resources effectively.
So we kept everybody?
Yes, we did.
Okay. That's the point, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. Consideration and approval of job order contracting general contractor services agreement with Chambers Engineering for space renovation to accommodate TCC Connect campus staff in the Trinity River Campus West Fork Tower in the amount of $498,648.67. Ms. Petty?
Good evening. Yes, this is a much-awaited item for the design work for, to move our Connect campus to our West Fork Tower at 444 North Henderson. And as you might recall, this is a requirement for Sacks to have a new address for this new campus, and we're hoping that you will approve this. We've been working months with Dr. Morales's team in visiting with them about how they can be most effective in the space. And now this manifests itself, all that work, into a design contract, and then we will be bringing you a construction contract after this to complete the work, and we're hoping to have them in no later than October, and hopefully earlier, depending on the construction contract. That's when you can really gain some time, so...
October of this year?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve. Mr. Heed, seconded. Ms. Vandergriff. Questions? Discussion?
I have a comment that if you read the last two lines, since TCC is going to be its on-campus, I think you should look at the designation so that it has a singular designation rather than being TCC Connect on the Trinity River Campus. So, I think you should take a look at that.
Absolutely will. And I think we're talking about doing some signage on that West Fork. So there will be actually an entrance. You recall you approved the staircase, and so there'll be an entrance and a new door, and that's the appropriate time. We're also working very closely with Downtown Fort Worth Inc. right now, who has helped us with the wayfinding traffic signage in downtown, and they are right now making some recommendations on some additional signage that Gary Prather and I are working closely with them on that would provide some additional traffic signage. And we have raised the idea of adding the Connect campus to those wayfinding traffic signs in downtown. So, thank you for that point, and we will look into that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do those signs currently include Trinity River Campus?
They do. They do. They don't, so it wouldn't, they don't have a designation. They have a distinction between Trinity River Campus and Trinity River East Campus. And so there would be the thought to add on the Connect Campus. And again, I think it's very important for Sacks that we do have this new address and that there's some identification, that the West Fork Tower is identified as Connect. And of course, we're going to be doing other things in that tower, but of course, I think for our student's success and directing students to that, they need to know, so...
Totally unrelated. We still don't have a sign to Northeast Campus and westbound Airport Freeway. That exit is still not marked. I don't know if that's you or Dr. Gobin or some other person.
Some of that's, of course, regulated by Texas Dot and others that are...
I know, and it happened when all that new construction. We got lost in the shuffle.
Teams here, and we can look into that.
It takes you all the way to the Grapevine Highway. I always think about that when I'm on the highway, and I never think about it when I'm here, so...
We will look into both of those items, so thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions related to this topic? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item number 12. Consideration and approval of indefinite delivery indefinite quantity service agreement with Bennett Benner Partners to provide design services for space renovation to relocate TCC Institutional Intelligence and Technology Staff to the Trinity River Campus West Fork Tower in the amount of $143,388.14. Ms. Petty?
Again, this is moving our Institutional Intelligence Team that have been up at Alliance on the third floor of our Aviation Excellence Building Excellence Center. And we've been working for months again with this team of 100 people to get us ready to present this design contract to you this evening, and I know they are, we've been talking to them since January in terms of learning how they work in an effort to try to get them in, designed into a very effective workspace. So this contract is for design. We'll come back to you with the construction contract, and we'll have a better sense of the timing of that. But again, we're looking at late 2016, early 2017, depending on their timing, and to move all their teams up there. And I know they're excited about getting centrally located and closer in.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, second. Dr. Morrison. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item number 13. Consideration and approval of bi-board cooperative agreement with Enviromatic Systems to provide materials and labor for building automation upgrades on Southeast Campus in the amount of $575,230.29. Ms. Petty?
Yes, in your summary that you, hopefully you had the opportunity to review, there's a lot of information about this particular item in terms of the history and the phasing of this, and our great infrastructure team also in your packet puts together always the phasing of this project, and we're, at this point, we're in the repairs and upgrades. And this is important because it really helps us accurately control the environment in an effort to provide a good educational environment for our students. Notation here is that we're looking at approximately a 10% savings on the air side of energy. Mr. Holkey told me before our meeting that I might want to mention that to you in this. And again, there was some additional expense to this than what we budgeted for that you probably read about in the proposal here, which is going to make the payback a little bit longer than what we had anticipated from 4.4 years to 5.4 years. And these sort of things happen, you know, sometimes, as you see in a number of the items we have tonight, pretty much their budget was point-on, but this one was a little bit higher than what we anticipated, and I think they provided you some detailed information on that. But if you have any questions, I'm sure they'd be glad to answer it, because I know this is sort of a complicated item, and it's costly, so...
Motion to approve. Dr. Morrison, second.
Second.
Mr. Greenhill. Comments? Discussion? Questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 14, right? Am I, lost my place? Consideration. I do not have my phone on. Consideration and approval of bi-board cooperative agreement with Enviromatic Systems to provide equipment and associated automation needed to control new and chilled and heating water on Northwest Campus in the amount of $150,240.58. Ms. Petty?
Yes, Northwest Automation, very important project to keep the campus cool for Dr. LeBlanc and her team. This is one that we did actually come in less than the estimate that you see on the phasing, planned by about $50,000, so that's great, but that's not always the case, but we sure hope that you approve it.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, second. Ms. Vandergriff. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14. Consideration... Sorry.
15.
Consideration and approval of job order contracting construction trade services agreement with TD Industries for construction and installation services for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing equipment in an auditorium area of the Health Education Building on Northwest Campus in the amount of $499,991.27.
As you, probably Northwest, of course, pools are always expensive to maintain and to keep up, and that, as you probably saw in your packet, there's a million little line items. There's a lot that goes into this, obviously by the amount of this item that we're asking to approve, but it's very important, if any of you have ever been in the pool area, this is really needed. It's not a comfortable environment in there at this time, so we're eager to get this taken care of.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded. Mr. Heed. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16. Consideration and approval of purchase low-voltage switchgear from Facility Solutions Group for South Campus and Northeast Campus Central Utility Plants in the amount of $296,000. Ms. Petty?
Again, on your phasing report that you have in your packet, you see that this is the purchase of equipment, so we will be coming back to you for installation at some point, and we're asking for approval on this.
Motion... Oh, sorry. Motion to approve. Dr. Morrison, seconded. Ms. Yalom? Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17. Consideration and approval of purchase interior LED lighting system fixtures from Facility Solutions Group for South Campus in the amount of $151,555.69. Ms. Petty?
Yes, these next two items are both at South Campus and both lighting, which is very important to not only our students, but our staff and our community, to have our buildings, both interior and exterior, properly lit. So this first item is specifically for interior for three of our buildings that are detailed out in the summary, and if you have any specific questions about what we're doing, I have the team here to answer them, but we hope you'll approve it this evening.
Motion to approve. Ms. Vandergriff, second. Ms. Yalom? Discussions? Questions?
Are we going to get any energy savings, or do you have that calculated?
Well, in your summary, it's listed, and I'm sure the team can elaborate, but the electrical energy uses of the buildings is listed as estimated to decrease by 50%. This is an estimated to just decrease in each building's overall electrical energy used by 25%. And I'm sure both Walt and David could give you more information than you ever wanted to about these.
Also, 20-year life on the bulbs.
That's right.
You don't have to change the bulbs, but every 20 years.
We have a lot of personnel right now around the district that are just devoted to changing light bulbs, and so we're eager to get this new type of lighting in all over the district. Would you like more information, Mr. Heed, on energy?
How many campus presidents does it take to change a light bulb?
Motion to approve item number 17. LED lighting fixtures.
So moved.
Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Heed. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item number 18. Consideration and approval of job order contracting construction trade services agreement with Facility Solutions Group to install previously purchased LED lighting fixtures, controls, and lighting poles on South Campus in the amount of $499,548.23.
And this is for a portion of the interior of the South Campus and a section of our new road that will be lit. Any questions on the specifics?
Motion to approve. So moved. Dr. Morrison? Seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. Discussion? Questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And on that one, Mr. Heed, they, in the summary, there's an annual savings of $63,000 annually for this item.
Item number 19. Consideration and approval of cooperative purchasing network agreement with Advanced Roofing Services to restore roofs per the district roofing assessment on Southeast Campus in the amount of $1,622,362.50. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Dr. Morrison? Seconded. Mr. Carter. Any questions? Comments? Do you want to say anything, Ms. Petty?
Just very important work for this campus to be done, and in your summary, you'll see specifically what parts of the roof that are being restored. This is the flat part of the roof that's being restored, not the green barrels of the campus. And David Holkey is here this evening, if you want to visit with him about it, because he was there when the campus was built, and he can tell you more about the roofs than you would imagine.
He's our roof guy. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of replacing the roof on Southeast Campus?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Sure.
On page 33 of the base bid breakdown.
I'm sorry, are we on item number 19, the roofs?
Yes.
Okay, and you're looking at...
It says page 33 at the bottom, and...
Okay, I'm with you. And you're looking at the TCPN administrative fee of $39,000? David, can you help? Or Chris, or Gary, or Chad? It's a purchasing, is this our purchasing? Okay, yes, I know what, I now know what this is, but I think Mike Herndon's the appropriate person to answer this.
No, that's great.
Almost lost. Yes, when we bid...
Yes, when we bid this, this type of roofing in order to maintain our warranty, we have to restrict it to certain contractors who are certified to work on those kind of roofs, and they're all under contract through TCPN. This was competitively bid by multiple vendors, but then that's part of what they tack on to their price when they do the work. But it is a fee that through TCPN that they pass on to us. No, the fee, it's a fee, something like this, and that sounds like a lot of money, but it's a very large contract. It's a fee that these contractors generally have to pay when they're awarded bids through these contracts. Some of these contracts, TCPN is not one of them, but some contracts actually give rebates back to the institutions who use them. This, TCPN is not one of them, but it's an administrative fee to be a part of that consortium that gets passed back to the end user. But we do competitively bid it to get the best price, but all of them would have the same fees in their bids.
Should they, they have a fee on every one of their bids?
Ma'am?
They add this, this, not this necessarily, this?
No, it's a percentage of their overall price, correct? Yep. The same thing, yes, they all have to be part of that. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve. We've already done that.
We did that.
Thank you. And we voted on it, and so now we're on item number 20. That's what happened. It's all your fault, Teresa. Consideration and approval of purchase code blue system equipment from Simplex Grenell for classrooms district-wide in the amount of $1,117,384.48.
And this is an item that actually came up through our innovation forum and was sent out to specific members of the KELT that are what we call departmental owners of this, which would have been Vice Chancellor Robinson in her role as legal to look at this, and if you recall, we approved this in a previous board meeting, and this is for the equipment, for a very important equipment to have in each of the classrooms. So we're actually purchasing this equipment to go into 950 classrooms around the district, and again, equipment only, and in late July, it's estimated that the team will go out and do an RFP for the installation of this work, so just to give you a heads up that that's coming, and we are asking for you to approve it.
So this is just to purchase the equipment at this time?
Yes, it is.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded, aye. Ms. Vandergriff, any discussion, questions?
Yes, I did. I actually don't think it was budgeted, and we discussed this blue system thing.
Correct.
Here's some of your Fund 40. To me, $1.1 million expenditure unbudgeted in a budget year is inappropriate at this particular time. What I think we should do is put this back into, and right now, this money would pay for any number of these requests that we saw earlier. So in my view, we should move it to a budget request for the next budget session. So, you know, I'm not going to vote for it, and frankly, if I had known it was going to be this expensive, I probably wouldn't have approved the original expenditures for researching and looking at it, but I think at this late date to come up and say that we have $1.1 million unbudgeted expenditure is just not, just not appropriate. I'm also unconvinced on the usefulness of this blue, this blue phone system, so you may call a vote now, I suppose, unless somebody else has something.
Other comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just one, I guess. Two.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. McLendon.
Okay, this is the favorite time for everybody, so I'll make sure that I take all the time that y'all need to go through everything. Okay, financial statements, okay. We're in the ninth month of our fiscal year, so we're looking at revenue or expenses that are greater than 85%. Nine months would be nine twelfths, or 75%. So when we look at our state appropriations, they're as anticipated, they're paid on a 10-month schedule, so they are as we expected them. When we look at our maintenance and operations, again, that is also just as we expected it. When we look at our tuition, I know that you probably have highlighted and looked at that negative $1.45 million, and are wondering what that means. And what that is, is that we're going to have the T-Peg grant, which is, it's going to, it's something that we do throughout the year, so there's going to be an estimation for the months of June, June, and July, and it's going to be about that with other expenses, so we're going to estimate our tuition a little bit. The Texas Public and Education Grant is something that the state of Texas asks public institutions to provide for their students. So if we look at also the interest income, it's showing at 241%. Again, as always, this is a mark-to-market as a GSB entry, and so that's why it's showing such a large number. Our total revenue is at 93%, and this is exactly what we're expecting, so we're very confident with our revenue. When we look at our expenses, so we're going to look at expenses greater than 85%. As we always mention, since we have new people in the audience, and you may have people that are listening in, that we, in September, we recorded all prepaid expenses on, as we did on 8/31/15, and this, some expenses that are larger than one consumption, so that's why you would find possibly a larger number. Prepaid expenses means that this expensive benefits more than a period, an example could be a software license or insurance where it benefits a lot larger than a period, or it could actually cross fiscal periods also. Incumbrances is also, VPOs are an example. At this time, our overall expenses are at 77% versus 75%, so we are confident with our expenses are in line as we see it. We'd like to go to the investment portfolio, okay, and so the investment, first of all, we have a beginning balance, we'll start talking with our pools, we have a beginning balance of $161 million. We have an increase in cash of $17 million, giving us an ending balance of $178 million. The short term, which gives us, it's an interim for periods from 90 to 100 days, provides it better than the pools, we had a beginning balance of $20 million, we had a maturity of a term for $10 million, so that gave us an ending balance of $10 million. On our U.S. Agency Securities, we had a beginning balance of $131 million. We had the first call of the Federal Farm Bank and Credit Bank for $10 million, we had another call from the Federal National and Mortgage Association, Fannie Mae, for another $10 million, and given us an ending balance of $111. This has been a situation that's been throughout where they call them for interest rates. If we look at our total portfolio, we have a beginning balance of $312 million. The net effect is a decrease of $13 million, giving us a ending balance of $299 million. Okay, if we look at our performance now, our yield through 5/31 is 74%. Our, this compares favorable with a T-bill of 52%, giving us a spread of .22%, which is naturally the .74 minus the .52, giving you the net thing of the 20, .22%. Our weighted average maturity is right now at 344 days, as requested, okay? I'd like to take us to the total monthly earnings of interest is $194,000, and our crude up-to-date is $533,227,000. Any questions?
Questions of Dr. McLendon? Ms. Robinson, Chancellor's Report. We do have new staff introductions this evening, and Dr. Madison and I have, I guess Dr. Madison's up first.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. First, I'd like to introduce Dr. Tetsuya Ume Bayashi, or we affectionately call him Dr. Ume, as he is also known by his students. He is the new Director for the Licensed Vocational Nursing Program. Ume is known for his professionalism and precise work with students and patients. He holds a BSN from Midwestern State, an MSN and Doctor of Nursing practice from Walden University. He has been on the TCC Faculty Program since 2008. He's also taught several levels of programs and has served as course coordinator several times. He's definitely a leader in our nursing program. He is highly regarded as a team player and shows a willingness to perform whatever assignment is required. For example, is very proud of the pharmacology online course and electronic charting system and dosage calculation modules that he created in collaboration with IT. Clinically, he has 10 years' experience in ICU, medical surgical telemetry, and emergency room areas. He works collaboratively with all nursing, medical, and other staff members. He's taught for us for seven years, and he is bilingual. He speaks both English and Japanese. Dr. Ume received the TCC President's Award in 2015, the Community Service Award in 2015, the Hallmark Award in 2013, the Dean's Extra Mile Award in 2010, as well as the Daisy Award for Excellence in Patient Care. We're delighted to welcome Dr. Ume to TCC again.
Thank you very much. It is an honor to stand before you, to be introduced to you. I'm so happy to be able to establish LBN program at Trinity River East Campus. My goals are to expand nursing program at Trinity River Campus and create pathways for many students to become a professional nurses in the future. Thank you very much for, sorry, thank you very much for providing us this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's also my pleasure to introduce Ms. Norma Guzman Duran. She is our new Assistant Director for Clinical Relations. Ms. Dumond, excuse me, Ms. Duran earned a Bachelor of Science from Texas A&amp;M University and an MBA from Western Governors University. She began her professional career in higher education as academic advisor at Texas A&amp;M University at Galveston, where she advised engineering students for two years. She later transitioned into a new role as Program Coordinator at Lone Star College, North Harris, in the areas of teaching developmental math, learning center, tutorial support, student success, and a host of other areas. Two years ago, she moved to the Dallas-Fort Worth area after accepting her new role as Professional Development Coordinator for Mountain View College. Early in her career, she has been honored with the Innovation of the Year Team Award, and she is currently active in the Hispanic Women in Leadership Organization. She is a strong advocate for helping students reach their full potential through career and workforce readiness. In her new role, she will look, she's looking forward to working with Designated Vice Presidents of Academic Affairs in our district office in administering clinical expertise and experiences for our students. In her free time, she enjoys cycling, both road and mountain biking, and has completed a few cycling marathons. Please welcome Ms. Duran.
Well, I have to say, it's been quite humbling, accepting the offer to come to TCC. All I can say is that the people are great. That first call from Dr. Coronado set the tone that no matter how long processes take, the people make TCC great, so I look working, I look forward to working in Clinical Relations and working for Dr. Stewart, but it's been great, the people have been wonderful, and they make every day quite dynamic. Every day is never the same at Trinity River. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's never the same, but it's always a positive experience. You got to work on that. It is also my delight to introduce Dr. Labata Taylor, who is the new Director of Academic Affairs at the Trinity River Campus. Dr. Taylor earned her Bachelor's of Business Administration, BBA, in marketing from the University of North Texas, and an MBA from Amberton University. To support her love of education, she also earned both a Master of Educational Administration and a PhD in Curriculum and Instruction from the University of North Texas. To complement her education, Taylor has served in various leadership capacities, not only in public and charter schools, but also in higher education, in other higher education settings, to include Professional Development Coordinator for Trinity Basin Prep, Adjunct Professor at UNT, Educational Support Specialist for Garland ISD, Assistant Principal in the Tyler ISD System, and an elementary school teacher in the Dallas ISD. Also, she is also a member of several educational and community service organizations. In addition, she holds certifications as teacher, principal, superintendent. She also describes herself as a transformational leader who is truly committed to college and career readiness, and is an advocate for student success. In her new role, she will coordinate the Texas Academy of Biomedical Science, early high school, transition to dual-credit feeder schools. She will organize and direct professional development on campus in collaboration with the Vice President of Academic Affairs and other projects as assigned. So we welcome Dr. Taylor.
Mrs. Appleman, Mrs. Robinson, and members of the Board, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'm elated to have started at TCC, and I would especially like to thank Dr. Madison and Dr. Stewart for entrusting me with this position and serving the community of Trinity River. So thank you very much.
We welcome you. Board members, Ms. Appleman, I have one introduction tonight. I looked high and low and finally found a replacement for Shanny Moore. Andrew Duffield comes to us as a graduate from Southwest Oklahoma State University in Weatherford, Oklahoma, with a Bachelor of Science in Education, Secondary Technology Education in 2004, and a Master of Education at School Administration in 2006. Before he accepted his position with Tarrant County College, he was the Interim Chief Diversity Officer with the U.S. Coast Guard Academy. He was in the process of being instrumental with their strategic planning process, and I snatched him out in the middle of that, because I said, well, we need you for that. What really impressed me about him during the interview process is he started to talk about Title IX and Title VII, and I said, what does a chief diversity officer have to do with Title IX and Title VII, because that's legal and that's investigative? He said, well, if I'm doing my job right, you don't ever get those cases, and I'm like, woo-hoo, I need you. So, yeah, Frank Hill, sorry. Prior to all of this, Andy joined the U.S. Navy right out of high school in 1994. While in the Navy, he served onboard the USS John F. Kennedy CV-67 out of Mayport, Florida as a hull technician. Andy credits the Navy with establishing core values of honor, courage, and commitment, which he tries to uphold with family, friends, and in his professional life. Welcome, Andrew.
Good evening, Board members. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to work here at TCC as the Director of Institutional Diversity and Inclusion. I hope to move forward a more inclusive environment for our students, faculty, and staff, and with your help, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffield. All right, Shelley? All right, Shelley.
I'm a proud Tarrant County College alumni and we're happy to be here celebrating the Texas Rangers win over Houston. Go Rangers!
Thank you, Dr. McIntosh, for that footage. Couple of recent activities. A lot of you were there for the Irma Johnson Hadley Building Dedication and this picture, this wonderful picture of Ms. Appleman and Ardenia Johnson.
And Emery. Oh, Gould.
Gould. Great picture there of the unveiling. We had the Tarrant Regional Transportation Luncheon with George W. Bush, very entertaining. And the Emerging Leaders Graduation Ceremony at the Botanical Gardens. So a very happy month. And that ends my report.
Unless you're Rip Van Winkle, you know that we've been in search mode and we're down to a finalist, Dr. Eugene Giovinini, and we're in the 21-day waiting period. Again, thank all of you who participated in that process. If you've opened your email in the last 24, 48 hours, we did the unusual and we distributed Dr. Giovinini's letter of application, what he told us about himself and his resume. So I hope you've read those materials and will agree with us that he is a good choice to take us forward. You'll see when I get into the dull reading of what we're going to do in closed session that we're getting ready to take the next step, so stick with us, you'll be hearing more. Several of the trustees went to San Antonio for the Community College Association of Texas Trustees Annual Conference and Mr. Carter has asked to be the first to report.
Yes, well, I did that because I wanted to make note that Mr. Bill Greenhill is now the Chair-Elect, so I expect big thanks from him. We went through, it was actually quite an interesting, I guess, day and a half. We did quite a bit of talking about pathways. We had a scintillating discussion about how to hire a new chancellor, which was about, I think, six months too late. But the good news was that as this world champ on hiring new chancellor was talking, we were about 90, 95% owned, so that was a good thing. I also wanted to make note, we saw a while ago that 92, that our average associate's degree person has 92 hours and the state average was 93, so we have a miniscule slight improvement. But we talked a lot about pathways and how this be in the way of the future and how you bring in students and you have majors and then as they take these courses, it narrows it on down, narrows it on down, and then they end up graduating on time. I guess because I tend to be a slightly commercential, or so I'm told, as I was doing the numbers for these, it occurs to me that one thing that we need to worry about in the future is that if you really are, if we really are dramatically successful with pathways and we reduce the average graduates from 92 to, say, 60, 63, 66, in four or five years' time, you actually would reduce the enrollment at Tarrant County College by 8,000 to 10,000 students, which goes under the category of no good deed goes unpunished. Also, if we were moderately successful, let's say we got them out averaging 75, well, you're still down 4,000 or 5,000 students because if you don't have them here for 90 hours, you have them here for 60 or 70, then you lose a lot of enrollment. So I think as we move forward, by the way, I mentioned this to one Kelp member and the Kelp member said, "Oh, well, don't worry about it, we won't be that successful." Yes, we will, you know? So, but, or at least I hope that there's an incorrect immediate assessment because that kind of is what happens a lot of times, we have these innovative things. But people are being very successful with pathways. They said students tend to wonder and I would not wander, wonder about what they're going to take. And my theory is, by the way, is that by the time they get through 30 hours, they actually know what they need to take and the wondering is really more about avoiding college algebra, anatomy and physiology, those kind of courses than it is about, you know, what I'm going to do next in my life. But one answer, by the way, is for increasing enrollment is dual ed, which we mentioned earlier. Another answer is to expand these programs that we have that are at capacity and which, by the way, have high caliber, high academic average students in them because if we don't do anything, what we're talking about will actually happen. We actually will lose that much enrollment. I guess by the, the other thing about talking about legislative things is there's some effort being made to basically make the sort of the point system more realistic because what's happening now is that about more than half, considerably more than half of the community colleges are not actually meeting the goals. What it's turned out to be is more of a way to fund community colleges less than it is to encourage competition, which was the idea of it. So, you know, we're going to try, they're going to try and we're going to try to make a concerted effort to have them have a little bit more realistic evaluation of the point system because it's really, a lot of the, a lot of the students here are not here to get associate's degrees, you know? They're here, and they're not even here to get certifications. They're here to take two or three courses, which will make it possible for them to get a better job and a better life and so we need to figure out a way to get credit for that. That's kind of where I was, but I wouldn't want you to think about that pathways business. And is there anybody out there who disagrees with the math? If we're successful with pathways, what happens with enrollment? Yes, sir?
I appreciate that and I think that you have a very valid point. The flip side of that coin is that if we are very successful with our pathways effort, our student success rates will go up and we'll counterbalance that to whatever degree they're at.
Yeah, it's a, you're right, we probably would get the whole 10%, but when you lose 15, when you lose 20% of your enrollment, it does, I mean, you're going to end up with a, if nothing else, you need far fewer faculty, fewer adjuncts, smaller staff, less buildings, less classroom space, that. So if, by the way, if they adjusted the formula, you'd be closer, I think, to right. Anybody else, I guess? Just, I mean, because I'm, I would like to be told that I'm wrong. I really would. Yes, ma'am?
So as we improve our completion agenda and have more individuals complete with less hours, there's also room for improvement on retaining students and those that we lose the freshman, the freshman year. So there are strategies that can be used to fill in the gaps that may happen if we're very, when we are very successful with the pathways. So the strategies that you heard today from the faculty that they're using to support the students so that they make better grades and they finish the course and move on to the next level, making a very good grade as well in the second level and so on, those same strategies will support the retention of students that might be failing today.
Yeah, I think probably one of the things we need to do now is just assume that that's going to happen and because, and react accordingly and develop strategies, retain students, find new audiences. Anyway, that's kind of it. Mr. Bill, congratulations again, by the way.
Yes, ma'am, I thank you, thank you, Trustee Carter. I'm very excited to be Chair-Elect of this organization. It's working very hard to connect all the trustees of our 50 community college districts. We have several committees and I'm going to be talking with our Board members to be part of those committees. The, one of them is the advocacy committee, which at least two trustees are interested in. What we've learned is that the, it's a very difficult relationship between the professional organization, TACC, and CATT. They're, we're still tippy-toeing around each other to try to coordinate, basically on the appropriations bill and other matters which are very highly, which we all are concerned with. We did learn at the, our lobbyists did tell us more about the coordinated plan that we're having to, in regard to the ask and other things for community colleges. Ray Lewis and Lydia Sabi, Sabi de whom? San Divanias have testified on several occasions with the legislative boards that are now meeting, that the time is now to, for the quote "ask" and quote, and for other things to improve our systems. As Chair-Elect, I'll be, I'll be doing some of that testifying too now. So I'm looking forward to it. It's a lot of, it's a lot of fun. We're going to be going to the TACC conference sometime in the very near future. They're meeting in Galveston and we'll be going there and you've already, Elba has already told us of a great restaurant to go to, so I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. Heath?
One of the things we had an opportunity to do after, well, during the conference and then after, was to speak to members from Alamo College about their student housing that they have there. It's a very, very successful P3 project that they did. They have zero funding involved, almost zero risk involved in the project. They've constructed 500 housing units and it's starting to yield a revenue stream to the college. But perhaps even more importantly than that is that what happens with the students because the students are now living on campus. As most of us went to school, we lived on campus and we all know that that's a tremendous growth opportunity to get away from home and even if they were from San Antonio, they're living away from home and they have that opportunity to rub shoulders with other students. And in that particular facility, it's not only students from Alamo, but students from any college or university in the area. So they're also rubbing shoulders with some of the four-year college students. So they get a real good experience there. It's a very nice facility. It's actually on the campus and that opens the possibility that if they want to take an evening course or a Saturday course, they're just to walk across campus like they would. It's a lot easier to get there, so that means easier access to additional learning experiences and of course, an increase in the use of the facilities as well, the utilization of the facilities. Another aspect is that they actually employ students in that housing development and the manager was actually a graduate of Alamo College and she was the resident manager there. So they have an opportunity to learn about that part of the business and it gives them a way to earn a little income while they're going to school as well. So that's something that we're looking into, I think, in our P3 program. But it was interesting to see something that was actually on the ground, they're now in their fifth, sixth year and doing very well, so it was good.
Well, one of the topics that I found interesting was a young man spoke from the Center for Public Policy Priorities. He was star. He had a lot of good data, a lot of good information that basically tied into the pathways model, but what he was talking about was there's a job polarization. In other words, the skills are changing and as far as what's needed in the workforce and overall, Texas is not quite keeping up with what the workforce requirements are. And so he talked about how, you know, there's some things that we probably need to implement in our colleges to align the education with the workforce requirements. And so I found that very interesting and a lot of the things we're already doing in, here at Tarrant County College, but, you know, it talked about the partnerships that we need to make sure that we're strengthening with our, with the business community and industries as well. So it's good.
Any other comments? Dr. Morrison, you didn't go. Do you want to talk about anything?
I will talk about something that was exciting. In my neighborhood, which is why I didn't go, we were participating with the Stop Six Shape Up Health, Fitness, Wellness, and Beauty Festival, which was, because of the weather, ended up being inside Dunbar High School on the campus. We all had the first Wildcat 5K run in the neighborhood. It was actually the second run, but it was the first in our neighborhood and we had 19 vendors and a lot of people from the neighborhood, a lot of community engagement, and OC, CIE was involved as one of the sponsors and focusing on partnerships and it was a great event. So that's why I didn't attend the conference, but I look forward to it at a future time.
Thank you. All right, we will now go into closed session. We do not anticipate action afterward. Session will include deliberation of real property, Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and consultation with the attorney, Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. So we are adjourned, or in recess, I guess, we'll come back, but I do not anticipate any action and pencil in July 21 for the next meeting. Maybe, yes, maybe not. Enjoy your day off and the weekend tomorrow.